................................................ Thank you. With that, we'll go down to the approval of claims.
Mr. Karam, make a motion to approve all four claims.
Okay. So I have a motion and a second to approve all claims. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
If that motion passed, now we're ready for Ted Johnson.
The first thing you tabled at the July fifth meeting is the public health funds resolution. The commissioners are required to say, yes, we will accept those funds. It does not require the council's approval, but I know that Dr. Backer is going to make a presentation to the council. So if you approve it, it will be, that's all that's required for the, for this application to be sent in. And it's resolution number 2023-05, and it, it does not relinquish control of the health department or anything to the state. It is just accepting these funds so we can do programs if they're not doing currently. And it will be based, the amount that we did will be based partly on the number of counties and health departments that participate. And it does not involve spending any new money by the county. The county's not committed to match or anything like that. It's not a grant. It's, it's an unconditional, it's an unconditional distribution of additional funds to local health departments.
And if that money runs out, do we still keep the programs?
Those programs would be, something that can be terminated by the health department. They aren't something that will continue on. I think they're, they're looking at things that they don't do currently, that they would do with, not necessarily with their own staff, like smoking cessation and so forth. What they usually do is they find somebody that has, that will do that, sometimes a nurse or usually a nurse, to, or a community educator to do programs like that. And they, they just do it on a contract basis. They don't become employees of the health department. Now, I think, I don't know if the health department's asking for any more employees or not, but that would be separate and apart from this, you know?
Then that would pay for the minimum cost of the year.
Well, I mean, I don't, I, I can't speak for Dr. Backer. I don't know what her budget, the health department budget included, but this program is not intended to replace anything that's in existence. They didn't want to replace anything that's already in existence. They didn't want us to depend on, necessarily on this money because it might go away.
Okay. Now, she uses, uses an example of smoking cessation.
Aye.
Is that, my, my memory's not good. Is that, is that what she said?
No, she didn't say that. I'm just saying, I'm, I understand from what, the way the thing is, is programs like that. And she mentions something specifically about the schools was one of the things she mentioned. And I'm not familiar with that, so.
I just know that the, the health department used to every year apply for a grant for smoking cessation.
Yeah, right.
Stop the case.
But it's programs like that.
Okay.
It's not to replace existing funding for the normal operations of the health department because if that got pulled away, then you would be on the, for applying funds.
Could that money be used, like, I didn't get a chance to go through all of them. Some I understand as well, but like abandoned properties and stuff, claims for health reasons, could it be used for that?
I don't, I don't know.
I didn't see nothing in there.
I didn't see that mentioned in there, but I don't think that, I don't, I don't think that that would be prohibited in there. I didn't see anything, if there's any restrictions on it. Those, those funds are decided, what they are used for is decided locally.
We got a place in County Canada, kind of managed, it looks horrible. The town found someone to tear it down for half the cost of our health department found, but he still wants to tell them to pay for half of it.
Right.
But I'll, I just spent hours just on the area. I think we can get it.
That's been, been a long time on the burner, hasn't it?
Yes, it has. It was their mansion except there, and now it's even worse.
It's terrible, isn't it?
They found the guy that could go in and dig for like half the cost, maybe eight to 10,000, so the 20 is my pocket. I don't know what they're proposing. The guy said he would tear it down, maybe that level a lot off, then it would be resold. Because right now, I think it's on our, it's a little harsh.
It would have to be a public health nuisance to, I would think. And as a word, if it's just a property nuisance, I'm not sure if the money could be used for that.
Pretty sure it could be a health issue, can't be a nuisance issue. But I'll try and, I'll handle it.
Normally, when you've got a nuisance issue, health department gets involved, it's a given a health issue, it's code enforcement if it's anything else other than that. We really don't have code enforcement department at all. The, our ordinances delegate that to the health department and to the area plan, but we don't have a dedicated, you know, code enforcement officer or employee or anything like that, so.
Well, I'm in the media, so I'm kind of in favor of this resolution. People, you know, possess any of the money, it's just, if the contract runs out, might be kind of mandatory to keep those programs going.
So it's a no?
No.
I'll make a motion.
I talked to another company, I was a woman, I was a doctor, and sort of concerned by having pretty well taken care of. And I like to think they want that. He said he thought right now it's about 20 percent of the half I see, so I know that he looks forward to possibly 80 percent. So I think, you know, we guess programs get, you know, have to.
I'll make a motion for a resolution 2023-05 for the public health fund.
I'll say.
Can I comment? I have a question. Or did he say, what, the other 20%? Why would they not want to go on board?
Well, it depends on the program. We didn't like to, you know, put it on the point of that. I got this, he sent me this information, I've done a couple of polls, I couldn't get along as far as, on my, and it's on call, it's on the, there's different things.
It's something that the health department, which one they pick, that?
Right. Yes, yes, 60, 40, and 70, 40, leave, right? You have three of those. It's kind of confusing, it's one of them.
If you don't expect any, it's a question.
Well, we have a motion and a second on the floor to approve resolution number 2023-05, resolution of the Carroll County Commissioners accepting state public health funding. And so I would call for a vote. All those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Two copies, we probably sufficient one for that, you want to go Dr. Backer?
All right. Do you sign it, man?
I should, you guys should have signed it in the last meeting. Bill keeps his name in his book.
I think I got one. Here's another.
There was something different about this. Because the one I just signed only requires one signature, and the one you just handed requires all three.
Uh, that's the one I, I, I use their form.
Okay, so we should be doing the one with all three?
Yes.
Okay. So now we're back to having one again?
That's okay, I can copy it.
Yeah.
Just sign the one again.
No, I forgot the, the last meeting you approved, you accepted the bid for Milestone Contractors for the 2023 paving program, and I've prepared for Scott to get the contract, please look at that.
Sure.
So this, this document accepts the, the number of Milestone, maybe which was the 1 million plus, it should be on the second.
1 million.
So not to exceed number. And the actual paving projects are based upon actual quantities, and the highway superintendent is the one that, they have to convince the highway superintendent that they have this much in it. If we don't, if it doesn't use as much as what they estimated, then that, that cost is not paid out. So the highway superintendent's in charge of that. And this is not any different this year. This is the way it's been.
I thought it was the same way last year.
Yeah, same way.
Do we need a motion on this now?
Uh, yes, to approve 2023 paving contract with Milestone Contract.
Did that like?
Well, you, you accepted the bid.
Oh, accepted the bid.
Yeah, this is the contract. Because it, it, it needs more verbiage than just the bid. You need more than the amount. This, this brings in to play other, other conditions and obligations.
This way, they just can't slap a half inch down and say, good, and move on?
Well, right, right, exactly.
I'll make a motion for the contract for 2023 paving for H and A.
Probably sign all three, so that Scott will have one and Milestone and the other.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second to approve the contract for 2023 Carroll County H and A paving. All who favor that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion, Ted. Okay. So we're ready for Highway Superintendent Scott.
The only thing I have, Dr. Beth, before the meeting, about, is wanting to take a CDL spot and make it non-CDL. Because we're getting, we're getting applications in, nobody's got CDLs. But that would, that would help us with this winter, having, it's my fault, town is north and south with, with the one tons, so we can, we can get that covered, and we got, like, weed eating and all that, they can do in there.
So they could drive the one tons with nothing else?
Right, they can drive the.
Wouldn't that fall underneath the CDL hiring man?
What would you fall under?
I mean, they're, they're being hired for these positions with the non-CDL, so we have to change the wording on the job description?
Yeah, to, you know, one is CDL and one is non-CDL.
I thought we already had that in question.
We do, but he, he had mentioned to me was laborer, that is on salary ordinance, and I, that is something different, but I'm, I think, I didn't have time, I just got that for two minutes, so I didn't really get to search it, but I went and got the salary ordinance. But on the salary ordinance, and I think you've been told, that you can have CDL and non-CDL up to sit 14, so you can, you can intermix those, but you need to make sure that they chart notes before they start.
Okay.
When you change it. I don't know about the laborer.
I know, I know that was a citizen that can't, yeah, or second, but.
I don't think we hired into it. Do you have anybody hired into it?
I think it's, I think, I'll have to look, but I think that's where we got Taylor.
Taylor's in the mechanical, non-CDL.
Right, well, he's, yeah, we're using him as, as the end of the shop, but that's the non-CDL and laborer.
Non-CDL and laborer are two different things, is what I understood at, before the meeting, right?
Because all I know is Kent made, and all the job description says non-CDL slash laborer.
So he would agree to it.
I have to check, I cannot just say he, I don't know.
The position that he's in, we just want to make another one.
For fieldwork.
Yeah. So they could, like I say, we could have them off towns and stuff.
They can, they can still haul stone in the smaller trucks and stuff, but they just can't drive the.
They can't drive the single axle or anything like that. They'd have to be like a one ton or a half, 26,000.
And you got the new, you got your old job description with you?
Uh, let me look. I have one over there.
I mean, you can't include, I mean, are the people you're hiring capable of getting CDLs after a while?
Um, the problem is that, that class, we can't put it on, so if we do it, we have to talk to White County and try to get them in up there.
Right.
We're trying to get the software to teach some people to teach it, so we can do it at the garage. If you do that, and then you have to take, pay $5,000 for class, that's, that's where the problem is.
That's where it came up, they changed all the walls.
Because we're getting, like I say, we're getting some applications, people coming in asking if we're hiring, and we say, if you have CDL, we're like, no.
I, I need.
We need to get what?
We need to confirm what they're watching out there, okay?
Okay.
Go ahead.
What's get?
In the non-CDL, you can grab a smaller truck. They can just basically do, they can drive to the site.
And they can do with other guys to patch or something that, it's just, they can't drive.
How much differences are in wages?
Um, I think it's like a dollar difference, dollar, over dollar, it's like dollar, or a, driver's 20, 36, I think. And then the, the non-CDL is like 19 or something.
I don't think the laborer position is ever going to be, she's got it, you know? Yeah. So we did the labor operator, but before it was approved, Kent came back and wanted to change it to equipment operator, but we already had an equipment operator position, so then he wanted to change, to have two equipment operator positions, one with a drive, the CDM, one without a driver's license. But it was, that's where it stopped.
You never did send it on there earlier?
Well, I never was on there.
Oh, okay. And that would cover you, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
Operator, laborer position?
Just don't use the term laborer.
On the non-CDL, is it going to require though, if they're going to be driving a, a county truck to have the, what used to be considered the chauffeur's license, now it's just an endorsement, to be able to, as part of a job description, legally drive a company-owned vehicle? It's a simple test, there's no driving or that, it's just a simple test to get it, but.
I don't think you have to have that, because you're not, you're not transporting public people.
Well, no, it's not for public people, it's for driving a vehicle up to the 26,000 pound as part of your job. I know in the past, insurance companies have required it, to be able to drive even a van, you know, a company van, you had to have at chauffeurs, and now the endorsement. Because there was a chauffeur's and a public passenger chauffeur. And the public passengers, when you're hired to transport people in the chauffeurs, was just for operating company vehicles.
I think we need a label, we need to go start to find out if you're company.
The laborer position, the job description was never filled, never.
Right.
So we do not have that position. But he does have the right to the CDM and non-CDM not to exceed 14, so he can switch that and walk there without, without you, without council, just so you don't go past 14. But it's not the labor part, and I don't know about non-CDM.
Right. I think that's what you're talking about, you need someone to drive a one-ton truck, but don't go over like two. So I think we'll be okay then.
Okay.
However, the non-CDL position, you should advertise that because I notice it's not posted, you know, posted for CDM drivers, there's nothing out there for, for non-CDL drivers, so shouldn't we have to post after too, before you hire?
Sure. I think you, I think you wanted for laborers, it was on Facebook.
So we don't have the laborer position, so that should not.
It's more like, I think it was.
The CDM and the non-CDL are more or less the same. If they're, if they're getting job descriptions that are non-CDL, I can see where Melinda's saying that it needs to be advertised because others, non-CDL, might want to do that too. So, yeah, I need to be posted.
Okay, so that's two steps here, right? We need to find, we need to advertise for non-CDL, and you need to find out about the chauffeur's situation.
I would call the insurance company to find out.
It's, it's now listed as a for-hire, uh, non-commercial vehicle, meaning over 26,000 pounds, is the way the, but it's a endorsement.
Those structures are going to be that head?
So.
It's under.
No, for under, under 26,000, it's for under 26,000 pounds, and.
Oh, okay. I'll say 14, 15.
All right, I'll, I'll call, I'll call the insurance company and ask him what they prefer.
Is that, is that something we need to have Ted looking at before?
I would just call Bob Reed, you know? I'd just call Bob Reed.
Maybe just stop in, see him, pull away there.
I know I talked to you earlier about driving these pigs out here.
Yeah.
By the, they seem, I had a phone call from the construction company, said about here today, they need to haul out more there than they thought. And that's what it costs us a lot of extra money.
Wait, you're talking about the jail site?
Yes.
Okay.
And I talked to Scotty, he can free up a couple of drivers, the haul of force over to the old dump, to save us tons of money, and we utilize that dirt in other places.
You mean the, the old landfill, what's in, in back of Carroll County?
Yeah.
The one you're talking about?
Who has the stone pile?
Things might be different now.
All right, okay. We change it again? Go ahead. I was just bringing it up because he's standing here.
So I had a conversation with the F and S. The original survey was taken in 2019 with hard, hard points. So F and K flew their drone back in June, I think like June eighth. And the problem we really have with the drone shots is any blade of grass, any old cornstalk could throw that elevation off. So we're not 100% certain that the site is actually off by three inches. We're proposing to take and stockpile all the dirt on the back per what our contract is. Leave it there, and if we have to move it out at a later date, it's not going to be that high of a cost. And I think we want to leave it there in case we do need it at a later date, which is what the contract reads right now. However, if you want to move it out, we can do that, we just needed to know a dump site for it. So initially, we had a takeoff of about 8,600 cubic yards. We thought we were going to have an additional 3,000 cubic yards, but I don't know if that's going to be the case right now, based off of my conversations with the F and S and what we're seeing on site.
So we can still just pile in the back?
I think that's our best, our best scenario.
Okay, and you have Scotty's number, if we need to truck it to save us cost?
I can give him after this, we can.
Is that on the old?
Yeah. The, the additional dirt will be taken off throughout the entire site.
Right.
Our initial takeoff, like I said, was 8,600 cubic yards, and we were estimating an additional 3,000. I don't think that we're going to have that.
I'll check something.
Another story to do.
I warn you, before you start hauling out there, maybe you better have them come out because you don't, you have a cemetery back there, you don't, I don't want to haul dirt on top of that cemetery.
Yeah, we was going to stay.
Way back.
Off the cemetery, yeah.
You know where the cemetery is?
We seen it back there, it was worth removed, more, yeah. We was going to stay on the other side of that drive.
I, I just barely remember that plant, that being back there.
I don't remember it at all.
It needs more earth on top of it, I know that.
Well, we can always simply have that too, actually. And we can haul off some land.
Yeah, currently, our drawing show for it will be stockpiled on the north side, the north, west corner.
Now, they have a huge pile there right now, what's, what, is it going to go on?
So everything, everything that's being cut right now is being pushed back to that corner, and it'll be stockpiled if it's, if it doesn't, it's touched for more than 14 days, and we have to seed it and cap it. So currently, we are waiting until I had this conversation to see how we're going to report, because right now, we, we're at a point right now where we need to keep cutting to keep on track with our schedule. So pending the outcome of today's meeting, we're just going to keep pushing it back there if that was agreeable to council.
I don't think we need to haul any of the health departments in, because we might have to haul some back for landscaping and stuff like that, because most of us give topsoil.
So the topsoils are even stripped and sitting in its own pot out there. The rest of this will just be the fill, and the, we'll call the spoils, which is probably clay.
I'm just going to put it in the back there, because the harder the dirt, the better it is for backside.
Mm-hmm, exactly.
Are you going, or are you going?
Yes.
The dirt pile for the contract is to be kept there, wouldn't seed it, and put the slip around it.
So then we got that worked out, just put it on that north corner.
Okay. Followed up.
Yes.
Back to the previous conversation.
Back to the previous conversation, uh, about the job, the, the official posting sites are where? Where does he have to post the job?
The only thing required is here in the courthouse, and, um, we posted on our website, but he can post it wherever he'd like to.
Well, Steve mentioned Facebook, and I didn't think Facebook was an official thing, yeah, okay. Just, just making sure.
I think all the employees put it on there.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Not surprised.
Weed control, how we doing on that, Scotty?
What's that?
Weed control? Like around the building and stuff?
Yeah, we've, um, we had them all, um, we cut all the weeds down and then we want to spray on.
Okay, can you spray at, in the transfer station where they can't mow?
Okay.
You know, like around the fence and that one area where it starts to go in? Anything that's tall, I like to spray. Play a little better.
Yep.
Please, I thank you.
You're welcome.
I wanted to ask you about, uh, the Lower Lakeshore Drive on Freeman. We need to keep an eye on that, because it's getting narrower and narrower and it's disappearing again. Pretty rough.
The washout?
Uh-huh.
Is there like that washout right there?
Yeah, I think so, I think that's one of the.
You say the Lower Lakeshore Drive?
Lower Lakeshore Drive, yeah. Anything else to go for Scott?
No, I'm good.
You got it, more?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're ready to move down to, uh.
Morning, gentlemen.
Okay.
So, um, they were able to get back to me at, uh, pretty fast on what it's going to cost and, uh, approximate time range of repair. The work order, repair work order, um, a hundred and two thousand, three hundred and ninety-four dollars. That includes, um, replacement of everything down below, uh, the big shaft they call it, that which is referred to in their proposal, it is a plunger. Um, hopefully, they're hoping that they don't have to replace the plunger or the cylinder head, um, which is the very top portion of where the, the plunger comes out to the bottom. So they're not going to have to replace everything else, which is the casing, um, which is what everything sets into. And all those fixtures, uh, that, the only thing they're hoping that's not included in the hundred and two thousand, like I said, is the plunger itself and the cylinder head.
So it actually broke on, they, they.
They said it blew, they said that the jack blew out, which is, um, what's down below.
Right.
On the, on the.
The cylinder itself blew up?
Yeah, so the casing, yeah, cylinder itself, casing that sets in, they're hoping to be able to save that, the plunger. And, um, they're hoping to be able to save the cylinder head itself.
So based on their replacements and seals?
Replacing the, well, the casings and stuff like that, which is, which is down underneath the ground, which they'll have to excavate, correct? Uh, all the concrete and stuff that's all setting in, replace that all back new. And then it, uh, currently, they've lifted the elevator, I mean, it's sudden, kind of like in between first floor, the basement. So this process, they'll have to hand crank the elevator all the way to the roof, block it off, or all the way to the top corner, be able to get the plunger, the, out of it. And the plunger is just long below the, um, offset amount of certified weight that the elevator can actually hold. So whatever those, that calculation is, um, it could be ten fifteen feet still underground for a casing to the depth of the wall. But from what I was told, the reason for the teardown is that the plunger itself, which should be set into a PVC instead of where they're wrapped into. He referred to it, to me, as electrical tape wrapped. And then if any debris, rocks, whatever else would have got down inside that cylinder head between the casing and the plunger, they're going to rip that eventually. Other, not function. Old technology, mostly the old technology. Correct?
Well.
Well. We do have, can't cap, we have sixty thousand in there for a later upgrade. They can't be upgraded, we feel this is big, so. When we did the budget, we need to put more in for.
So we pay a half, front and a half next year?
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know myself.
But to get going, you have first payment?
We still have one here for the first floor improvement?
It's got to be fixed.
Well, we're, we're almost there, I'm sorry. There's two steps to it. Because the amount exceeds the amount we can do normally under public purchasing. I talked to Keith before, since this is a, a condition that arose after the entry of a, of a contract, was not aware of the, the need for replacement of this equipment. The board can't approve this on a special purchase with the existing contract. It's a separate contract, but it is, it's in addition to, it's similar type of work. As you, but you already have a contract with this company, TK, this elevator corporation. You can, you first have to, uh, adopt a motion to approve this work as a special purchase under the Indiana purchasing statute. I'm looking for the, the site for it. So that's the first step, and then, uh, the second one would be to, you know, to ask the council to appropriate the plant. Do you think there's plants already available for this?
Can't, we didn't.
Yeah, we haven't used the sixty thousand.
There was sixty thousand for upgrade.
You drafted a transfer from.
I don't remember balancing your first four, but I don't think it's missed fifty thousand.
I was gonna say, I thought we had over two hundred thousand for that.
I don't really know, without looking.
But with that.
We take some hours here?
I think we did something, for something like that.
You some of it for the cameras?
The cameras.
But I, I mean, if you had a hundred thousand in there, what would you have done?
I thought this was, yeah, I thought I had the budget.
Is there more? I guess I'm concerned with spending a hundred and three thousand dollars. Out bids, if taken forward, I mean.
And that was one of my things I wasn't aware or not familiar with on the process of. Um, we do already have a service contract with this company, that's a monthly bill of service contract. And as soon as I got this in first availability, to present it to you guys, um, we're, we're a map. So I don't know if there's a clause as a repair order.
Can I just explain how we can go ahead with that?
Yes, it's a, it's IC five twenty-two, uh, dash ten, dash, uh, with several sections that could apply, but the one that probably is, the purchasing method bears the functioning of the agency, which is under section nine, five twenty-two, ten nine. So, uh, you're holding up that getting the op, getting the elevator back to service is, is going to be a priority, you know, for, uh, handicap accessibility and in general, safety and all that. So I, I think it qualifies, it qualifies for special purchasing, which means that you don't have to have competitive quotes on, on this part of the work.
Okay, so my question to my fellow commissioners is, you think that it, that getting the elevator back working so we are completely, uh, handicapped accessible, is sufficient reason to not get another bid on it? You're going to take a lot of time now, to try to get somebody else in.
I've already got some phone calls about the elevator now.
Oh, yeah, but.
But we didn't predict this was going to happen.
And we may not get a bid that's lower, we may get bids that are higher, because we don't know that.
TK's been pretty fair with us, and they've, they've, they've kind of listened to his calls. I don't think there's ever been that delay hazard, you know?
And the other, when we started doing the initial upgrade proposal, I went out and then put due diligence, got estimates for you gentlemen. Um, and every single one of them, uh, even one of the proposals, they turned significantly higher on ECS, um, than what Dyson Corp was.
So they've already been in a competitive bidding situation before, and they, they were the lowest?
Yeah, uh, when we first initially started phase one, and that was presented to you gentlemen in all the three phases, um, I presented two or, I think it was three different estimates for upgrades from different companies, and Dyson Corp was the lowest, and the others were significantly higher.
The other thing is, you've got one contractor working on one part of the project, and you bring another contractor in, you've got issues of coordination and compatibility too.
We've utilized, we've utilized here in the courthouse Dyson Corp since, uh, when Dyson Corp bought out AMTO, who we used to have a service contract with. So Dyson Corp's been in here for a long time.
So what's the pleasure?
What's the first motion we need to make?
To approve the, uh, repair work order for the jack replacement and other, uh, work under this proposal, under, um, special purchasing, under the special purchasing method to, you know, I can give that to site.
Just write out that much, it would be great.
Pardon me?
You just write out that much.
If they were to pull out, uh, the plunger and they see that the plunger head and, or the plunger itself is damaged, um, it could be more. But they will not, as the con, as their proposal states, they will not move forward. As in somebody that will get paid for it, they will present it to me or I'll present it to you gentlemen, if there's any additional costs.
Well, that's good, that can happen with any contractor. Yeah, more, more you dig in, you'll find something, so.
Okay, so I have a, a motion and a second. It's a hard one to repeat, to, to approve the repair work order of TK Elevator Corporation for a hundred and two thousand, three hundred and ninety-four dollars, uh, under the special purchasing statutes.
So I call the book, call the paper, say aye.
Aye.
All right, so that passed now, our second motion is to actually hire people to do it.
Yeah, you're going to have the money to do the first part of that anyway, like with, with existing plans, right?
Pending. Pending council transfer or?
Not for the first payment. Now, the first payment, you know, where you have elevator and you can cap, is it upgrade?
But do we want us, do we want to, I'm thinking about this, okay, so we put sixty thousand dollars into this, we can't, I don't, I mean, I can't imagine they would.
If you have your money already, normally transfers. Normally transfers, if you have your money already allocated, but I cannot speak for all of them.
Right.
I mean, we weren't completing, completing the one elevator fund, so it's only like another fifty-some thousand that is coming out of the other.